Monday, Tuesday. And I was like, oh, here we go. There's probably fifteen hundred people there. And there's a security, I mean, like law enforcement was strong. And then you have these semis with these iron conflagrations and just driving in circles around. It was pretty cool. But apparently they've been helping.
Is she losing?
Yeah. She's down by twelve dollars below. She wants Hobbs hits fifty-two, it's done.
I call the November ninth, two thousand twenty-two Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. And now we'll have the roll call. Vice Chair Jackson. Commissioner Barlow.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Hassett.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
I tried. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Morse. And Chairperson Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. We will now have the automated announcement message.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign machine. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the table with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibration during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Thank you. I need a motion for approval of the August tenth, two thousand twenty-two Planning and Zoning Commission minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Hassett and seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
It's a delay.
Item number one is staff report by Alex Bolan.
Item one is an evaluation of a request. Item one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number four zero four two four one seven three from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, to allow for nightly tent and cabin rentals in the cane beds vicinity. This site is currently in violation for operating the rentals in the AR zoning. This rezone to CRE and the subsequent site plan required will bring the site into compliance. This item has received two letters of support and one letter of opposition, and staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Thank you for this opportunity.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Randy Paul, and I live on the subject property. I don't actually know the actual parcel number and anything like that.
What address do you use for your mail?
For mailing, one eighty-nine south, twelve west.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Randy Paul. I own the subject property. It is basically seven acres. When I bought the property, it had a house, attached garage, and a well. It was not...
Thank you. Oh, that's so much better. It was not originally my intention to start a business and be out of compliance. It started with the purchase of a tiny home prototype that I trained into place and finished. We listed it on Airbnb and had a very positive experience. The next season, we erected a wall tent and listed that also. That was also very satisfying, so the next season I added two additional tents. Somewhere in there, I crossed a border and got out of compliance. On the property, I now have a small lamping operation which covers about one of the seven acres, and I call it the cane beds corral. It consists of one tiny cabin and three wall tents. I constructed a bathhouse with two toilets and two showers to accommodate the needs of the gas. I have been informed that what involved into today requires a commercial designation, and that's why I'm here. Things that I am proud of and would like you to know are: Great effort has been taken to create something beautiful and special. I've found a great effort to preserve the natural vegetation and be sensitive to the natural surroundings. The grounds are carefully manicured and maintained. I studied architecture and currently make my living building sculpted environments. I put my full creative energy and education and effort into making the cane beds corral something special. Those efforts have been rewarded with recognition and write-ups from several large national publications, including Architectural Digest, Images in Arizona, Glamp Magazine, which I have with me, plus several features in travel blogs and... and, ah, sorry. In travel blogs. I provided some of that in the packet. I'm sorry. Can I just have a few more seconds, please?
Just a couple.
Okay. We've worked hard to build a quality experience for our guests. Out of over five hundred reviews, we have never had a review less than four stars. We average a ninety-four percent five-star rating. We have also achieved Airbnb super status, super host status, which is the top title as a host. We employ locals and contribute to the tax base of the area.
Okay, I think we have the information that you were talking about. Are there any questions from the board of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. I do have one person who has asked to speak. I don't know if it's Michael. Michael. Halliwell. Halliway?
Thank you very much. I'm Michael Halliwell. We have a second home in southern Utah, not far from Mr. Paul's place, and I have been on the facility there numerous times. It truly is a thing of beauty, as you saw on the pictures that he said, and he takes excellent care of it. I've actually been super impressed with his ability to coexist with the desert landscaping there. I think that he is definitely an addition to the area, and I would think that it would be a benefit to anybody around there to allow him to continue on with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item number one? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. I will now call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. We'll now move to item number two. Amy Patsy, is that correct?
Patsy.
Patsy.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number four oh two two four one three five to allow for an RV as an accessory residence in an RE residential recreation zone in the scenic vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? The applicant apparently is present virtually, so are there any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I ask for a motion.
Motion to approve for staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We will move to item number three. And Mr. Gunderson.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rescission of BOS resolutions two thousand and twelve dash one two three, two thousand and twelve dash one two four, two thousand and fourteen dash zero one one, and two thousand and fourteen dash zero one two, causing what is now Assessor's parcel number one two zero zero seven zero nine six to revert from a commercial recreation and general commercial land use designation to a suburban residential land use designation, and reverting the zoning classification from an SD CRE, Special Development Commercial Recreation Zone, and a C two general commercial zone, to an AR agricultural residential zone, having not met the conditions of approval in the Havasu Heights vicinity. Just as a little bit of background on this, this item was originally approved or rezoned to allow for a subdivision. During the recession, they kind of pivoted and tried to instead of doing a home subdivision, do an RV subdivision, which is what this rezone was for. And now they're pivoting back to a home subdivision. So the following item will be the preliminary plat for that subdivision. So this, these rescissions are kind of housekeeping items to bring that zoning back to where it needs to be. Staff recommends that the resolutions two thousand and twelve dash one two three, two thousand and twelve dash one two four, two thousand and fourteen dash zero one one, and two thousand and fourteen dash zero one two be rescinded.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to... Oh, is the applicant present? Wishes to speak? Do you wish to say anything? Okay, thanks. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commissioners have any questions on this?
I have a question.
Commissioner Neal?
Uh, Tony, is this for, is this for a stick built and/or manufactured or just a stick built?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Neal, so the zoning of agricultural residential would allow for either a manufactured home or a stick-built home.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I don't know if I did that already or not. And I will now call for a motion.
Motion to approve according to staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Neal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
If I can remind the commissioners to turn your microphones on so that they can hear it via the internet, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I am moving to item number four. Matthew Gunderson.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for an approval of a preliminary plat for Rancho's Havasu tract thirty-seven zero five, being a proposed subdivision of Assessor's parcel numbers one two zero zero seven zero nine four and zero nine six in the Havasu Heights vicinity. The proposed subdivision does include six petitions of exception, including the maximum length of a cul-de-sac, waiver of block length, waiver of full width right-of-ways, to allow for a large number of lots that are located on a collector's street, and to allow for a lot shape with a depth-width ratio greater than four to one, and to allow for single-tiered double-fronted lots. These petitions of exception, in large part, are because of the topography of the area. There are several large washes that they are designing around. Staff recommends approval for the proposed preliminary plat and petitions of exception with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one for staff.
Commissioner Patillo?
So they're not going to be providing sufficient right-of-way, is that what I'm hearing?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patillo, not the petition of exception, excuse me, let me pull up to it. So it's the petition of exception for a waiver of full width right-of-ways, and that's for interior and exterior roadways and access roads from the subdivision boundary to the nearest county or city-maintained roadway, and in accordance with county standards. And so it's some of the perimeter rights-of-way that they would not be doing a full development of. Public Works has seen those exceptions, those petitions of exception, and have signed off on them.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any question? Commissioner Neal?
I have a question for staff. Roadways to the project, are they going to be maintained by the county or...
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Neal, so they would be, so it'll, the site is going to be accessed from Havasu Heights, and so that will be a paved, maintained road from the highway to the site, to the access of the subdivision, and then paved roads are required within the subdivision.
Okay, so who's going to maintain?
If they are built to the county standard, it's typically the, they are adopted for maintenance by the county.
Any other questions of the commissioners? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I will call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? So moved. Item number five, Peggy Clements.
Item number five, evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of Assessor's parcel number two five four four one zero one three from an AR thirty-six agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lot size to an AR eighteen agricultural residential eighteen acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Windmill Ranch vicinity. The portion is more particularly described as parcel thirty-three B, as shown on a record of survey fifty-seven dash eighty-seven, consisting of nineteen point three acres south of Nielsen Bear Drive. Staff recommends approval per development standards.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak?
I'm not here, no.
Are any, any questions from the commissioners of the applicant? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Barlow. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. We have now item number six. Nicole Russell.
Item number six is the evaluation of a request for a rezone to Assessor's parcel three one three dash six one dash zero four seven from an AR thirty-six A agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lot size zone to an AR six A agricultural residential six acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor division in the Antares vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item number six? Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak at this time?
I'm not here.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number seven, Amy Patsy.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number three five three zero five zero two three from an AR thirty-six A agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lot size zone to an AR seven A agricultural residential seven acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Silver Springs vicinity. We received one comment letter from the state land department indicating a concern with legal access. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions. Condition seven addresses the legal access concerns, and legal access will be there during the parcel plating process.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item number seven? Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioners Jackson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Patillo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number eight, Alexander Bolan.
Item eight is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel numbers three one zero two seven zero zero four and three one zero two seven zero zero five to allow for a 4H rodeo and motorsports arena in an AR ten A agricultural residential ten acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item number eight? Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak? Please give us your name and your address.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lyle Goodwin, thirty-six fifty West Pecan Road in Phoenix, Arizona. Me and my brother Dominic back there, we purchased this property with a dream to complete, to build a motorsport complex, to bring to your guys' county here, so we can entertain all the gearheads here. Obviously, we found out that there's a lot of automotive industry here that will, that's supporting us with this. We come from, if you guys ever heard of Manzanita Speedway in Phoenix, they were a worldwide speedway that's no longer around, but we've, we were raised next to it, and it's our dream to, to build a dirt track in Arizona that's actually owned by somebody and not on leased land or state land. So we're here asking you guys to, to grant us this permit so we can get this done and bring some entertainment to the city. We want to illustrate dirt tracks, motocross, concerts, the 4H, the arena, rodeos, pretty much everything that has to do with dirt. So asking you guys to try to favor this and work towards our ways so we can help bring some things to the community. Like I said, we have lots of support through the automotive industry, as we come to find out, there's a lot of gearheads here that do like, that like what we're doing. I didn't bring anything with me. I have tons of support letters, because I was prior going to build a track in La Paz County, but I have, I have like three hundred support letters from people from all over the state and surrounding states supporting us. I didn't bring them, of course, but I have the support, the support behind us, and we have the, the experience to get this, this project done. Thank you guys for your time.
I would suggest when you go before the Board of Supervisors that you have your material with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Come to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name's Joe Kales, forty-three fifty North Arizona Street. I'm owner of Aiden Repair, Aiden Towing, Kales Realty, and Titan Leasing. My daughter's sixteen years old, and she races quads for works. She's got invited to do best in the desert as the youngest women's team ever. They'll be doing five races. Their facility would aid and help her progress to become a pro. She has one more year left. She just won Women's B. She's moving to Women's A next year. And the previous owner, she was able to go out there and train three days a week, just riding for an hour straight. She also is with a trainer to where she's, you know, just the sport in general is teaching her discipline. She makes her own foods. She looks everything up to make sure she counts her carbs, her proteins, and everything. This is at sixteen years old. Not to mention, she works out with a trainer twice a week, and at least once a month, we're gone four days for her races, if not twice a week. So she's actually contemplating on doing homeschooling so that she can focus more on racing, becoming the women's west coast champion. And then after the eighteen, her goal is to go to west coast and become the women's champion there. So this facility helps these children big time.
I'd like to ask you a question. Is there a track there now?
Yeah, the previous owner had a track there. He just, he didn't, they didn't, he didn't have the, the heart that these two guys have. And I, you know, I used to go out there and help the previous owner donating equipment, donating my trucks to move, move his equipment. I bought stuff there for him. But these guys here, they're taking it serious. They want to be a big part of the community and be a big part of helping, helping all these racers in the area.
I know, I would like to ask you another question. Is this, does it generate a lot of dirt, dust?
No, because there is large dirt tanks on there that have water. The property currently has three water trucks. There was a race held there not too long ago. We were able to, I donated two water trucks to that race a while back, to where if it's watered properly, no, it does not.
Thank you.
Sometimes the wind will let it get away from us, but they do stop and allow the water trucks to go on. and constantly water in between races to try and maintain dust as much as possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, if you have any other questions.
Are there any questions from the commissioners of this gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, uh, and ask for a motion.
Chairwoman, I have a question.
You have a question? Mr. Commissioner Patillo.
Sorry. So this is right next to the City of Kingman wastewater treatment plant. Have, have they been, had any comment on this at all? At least it looks like it to me.
Chairman, Lieutenant, Commissioner Patillo, uh, all of our planning and zoning commission items are sent out to the City of Kingman and we did not receive any comment.
And where, where, where is, where is the water for this project coming from? I heard, I heard mention of dirt tanks.
Um, Commissioner, I'm not sure if there's a well on the property or not. It does not look like there's a water line in the area, so it'd be well or water hole.
Would you like to answer that question?
Yes. Until the well's drilled.
Your name and address, please.
Joe Kalas, 4350 North Arizona Street. Um, I also own a company called K6 Water Works. Uh, we haul and deliver water with multiple water trucks in Kingman. Um, we would currently, we have our own meter, so if the well wasn't drilled in time, the water would come from the city and provide that profit to the city off of a, a meter that we currently own.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioners have any questions?
No questions, sir.
Commissioner Miel.
I talked to some residents within the area and this is an existing property. Was it, when, do you know when it was originally built?
Chairman, Lieutenant, Commissioner Miel, I don't know when exactly the, the site was built out. Um, I do know that it was previously approved back in 2019 to allow for the same use. Uh, one of the conditions of approval of that was a site plan needed to be done and that was never done. So that original special use permit expired, which is why they're coming for you today as a new applicant. Uh, but they're looking to do the same thing that they had done back then, um, that they would need to do a site plan in order to bring a property fully.
Okay, have another question. And it's happened, yeah, it's already happened once today and it's coming up again. I was under the impression they had to get the okay for zoning prior to construction on the property. Am I, was I been misled or have things changed?
Chairman, Lieutenant, Commissioner Miel, no, that is correct. You do need to get that approval first. Um, it's a large county, so we don't always catch things that people do without the proper permits. Uh, but in this instance, it's the applicant, uh, trying to do everything that they're supposed to do to receive approval.
I understand that. So there, so there's not going to be any deframifications by it already being built and somewhere down the line it blow up in the county's face.
Uh, Chairman, Chairwoman, Lieutenant, Commissioner Miel, if the property were to function without going through the site plan process, uh, that would be a zoning violation and it would have to be shut down until they completed all the conditions of approval of this special use.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Uh, second?
I'll second.
Seconded. I have a motion by Commissioner Jacks, seconded by Commissioner Barlow. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number nine, Nicole Russell.
Item number nine is the evaluation of a request for a special use permit of assessor's parcel number 310-26001 to allow for a new hundred foot telecommunications facility in an AR 10A agricultural residential ten acre minimum lot size zone. The application was submitted to planning and zoning staff pursuant to section thirty-seven R of the Mojave County zoning ordinance, which provides performance criteria for evaluating wireless telecommunications towers and facilities. The proposed tower will be, has to be set back at least three hundred feet from residential development. The applicant has provided documentation to show that the proposed tower will be located approximately five hundred and twenty-five feet from the residential development to the east of the property and the nearest existing tower is two and a half miles away. Staff recommends approval per standard conditions for wireless telecommunications facilities.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and I have several people who have requested to speak. So I'm going to start with Mary McDonald. Is she here? Okay, then we will go to Stephen Schultz. Please come to the podium and give us your name and your address.
Thank you very much. My name is Stephen Schultz and I'm, uh, I reside at thirteen seventy-four Pronghorn Avenue, Kingman, Arizona, eight six four zero nine. I, what I'd like to say is, I talked to Nicole Russell yesterday and she gave me a, a lot of information regarding this tower. My home is approximately a thousand ninety feet, uh, from the tower and we have views of four mountain ranges. We have the Peacock Mountains, the Holopy, the Music Mountains and the Surbat Range, especially Bull Mountain. And so the view from our house, and I live in Eagle View Estates, uh, which is the far end of, uh, Eastview Road, just off of Jagerson. It's a half mile from Jagerson Road. And I'm, I'm kind of neutral on this, but leaning to ask for approval because of what Nicole had said to me yesterday. And, uh, obviously towers, I don't know the real dimensions of it. I don't think the picture is that of a tower that they're going to be putting up. And I asked Nicole, what is a hundred feet, uh, facility? And she says, I said, is it a building? And she said, no, it's just the tower. So I would think that, um, as far as I'm concerned, uh, leaning for approval, uh, and because we do need cell towers in that area. Uh, a lot of times we can't get, um, our phones to work. Uh, one question I would have of the, uh, commission is, uh, who is actually putting up the cell tower? Is it Verizon? Is it T-Mobile? Who is it? And that's basically it. Thank you for, uh, giving me the time to speak.
Um, I do believe that in our paperwork, it says Atlas Towers are putting, are the people who are putting it up.
I see. I, I saw that and, uh, but I was wondering, will all the cell companies be able to use that then?
I am not, I do, we do not have that information.
I see.
We're just doing the zoning so that they can put it up.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have another person who wishes to speak on this, Greg Moyer.
Good morning.
Please give us your name and your address.
My name is Greg Moyer. I live at forty-eight ninety-three North Alston Lane, Kingman, Arizona, eight six four zero nine. Um, I live right across from the college and I've tried to do some research on this and I'm getting very little information. Um, so I have some questions. Hopefully I don't take too long. Um, wondering if anyone has ever done any environmental studies. I understand that T-Mobile is paying for the tower and Atlas is putting it up. That's as far as I got. Um, I, they're guessing from what I've, it's going to be a 5G tower. And I also did some research on that. Nebraska, you guys probably have heard of this in the news. Over ten thousand cattle had died overnight from, uh, in Nebraska from, um, a very such same tower where they turned the power up and it was accidentally on purpose, whatever. Those farmers were paid millions of dollars for that lawsuit. At first, they tried to cover it up and say it was, well, just heat stroke at ninety-two degrees, but they all died overnight. They all died of heart attack from the 5G tower that was turned up. I live less than a half a mile from the tower. It also ruins the view of the whole area. And I want to know a lot of questions, like do they, how much power is going to, into this? Is it going overhead, under the ground? Is there a fence got to go around it? Um, there's a lot of questions. So, um, I want to know if they've done environmental studies on people, if the power gets turned up? And who's all going on the tower? I only know of one, T-Mobile. So is there going to be fifteen other people on there turning 5G up? I don't have nothing against the, the lower powers of two point four or four point oh, but the 5G has been a problem in this country and, and animals have died. They haven't tested it on people yet. So that's basically all I have to say. Um, yeah, so if anyone on the board has a question of me of where I got the research or heard about it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Uh, and did Mary McDonald come back from wherever? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Uh, any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Two.
Staff recommendations.
For staff recommendation.
Thank you. I have a second?
Yes.
Um, I have a motion by Commissioner Barlow, seconded by Commissioner Patillo. Um, all in favor say aye.
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 And opposed? So moved. Now we will have item number ten, Peggy Clements.
Item ten is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 324-09131A, formerly known as 324-09130A and 324-09131 from an RM twenty M multi-family residential twenty thousand square feet minimum lot size zone to a C1 neighborhood commercial zone to allow for a retail store in the Kingman vicinity. There is one letter of opposition. Staff recommends approval per development standards.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and wish to speak? Anyone wanting to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. The commissioners have any questions of this applicant? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
I have a motion. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, so, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
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 Um, opposed? So moved. Item number eleven, Melanie, Melania, is that how you pronounce it? Um, Stradling.
Item eleven is an evaluation of a request to rename a road located in the southeast quarter of section eleven, township twenty-one north, range seventeen west, from Indian Canyon Road to Nicoletti Road. This is located in the Kingman vicinity. It is a shared road with the City of Kingman and they would need to go through the same renaming process through the city. We've received three letters of opposition.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone, oh, I do have one person who wants to speak on this. Lynn Carter? Please come to the podium. Sir, you cannot speak to the people at.
He's there.
Oh, okay.
Get your badge.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah. Mr. Carter, please give us your name and your address when you arrive at the podium.
Yes, my name is Glenn Carter. I live at one one five West Anson Smith Road, eight six four oh nine in Kingman. And this is concerning the renaming of Indian Canyon Road, which is the border of my western side of my property. But not only that, it extends south across Anson Smith Road all the way to I forty, which is actually, I believe, the real Indian Canyon. I've been told by neighbors that there's been artifacts found there. Apparently it's, uh, Walpee tribal land, was at one time. And, uh, the people that just bought the property across from me, forty five, forty-three acres, want to change the name to, I think it's Wingon Filter. Do you have it on your paperwork there?
No, we do not. Staff, do you have the name that is being suggested?
Uh, it's been requested that Indian Canyon Road be renamed to Nicoletti Road by the applicant John Nicoletti.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Moyer?
Uh, anyway, your honor, I've been living there since two thousand nine, thirteen years now. I'm retired. And, uh, I'm adamantly opposed to having that street changed to their ranch name. And they've just, uh, moved in there recently, within the past year.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? No. Then I, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, then I'd like to ask the staff a question. The road is now named Indian Canyon Road. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And he wants to change the whole road to his name?
The alignment Indian Canyon Road, yes. He wishes to request the whole thing be renamed to Nicoletti.
Okay, um, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commissioners have any questions?
I got, I have a question.
Um, Commissioner Jacks?
The question is, so, uh, the, the, the road does have a name currently and when the applicant talks about, um, being able to, uh, have emergency services get out to that area, it, they should be able to do it now, right, with the, with the name of the road?
As far as my understanding, it is, yes.
Okay. So everything is working just the way it is, is, the, the bottom line really is change the name of the road? Okay.
I have a question for staff.
Commissioner Hassett?
Is that common practice? Like, can anyone just change the name of a road? Or what, I mean, is there reasons behind it? Can anyone just file that and do it? Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Hassett, yes, that's, uh, it is an application that anyone can, um, apply for. Uh, when somebody applies for that application, we do send notification to everybody along that, uh, alignment and they can show their support or, or they can show their opposition. In this instance, we had, uh, three of them that showed opposition, uh, of the property owners. But was there, I, was there anybody that was in favor, Melanie?
Nobody responded back.
How many people were on that road? Turn your mic on.
There were several properties that were owned by one or two people. Um, I believe.
I believe the mailing list had about eight names on it.
So out of eight names or so, we received three that were in opposition, and I don't believe we received any that were in support. Yeah. To answer your question, anybody can come in and apply for a road renaming, and then we'll process it, and this is part of the process. The commission can hear it. They'll make a recommendation to the board supervisors.
So --
Go ahead.
Well, is there a -- has this happened in the past where someone decides, "I love living here," and they've won their last name on the street?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hassett, yes. We've had a few road renamings in the past.
Oh, it's just very -- that's different.
Well, I want to go on the record to say I'm against this. I like the name Indian Canyon Road, just because.
I have a question.
Commissioner Barlow?
So, this is a shared road with Kingman City?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barlow, that's correct. It borders a subdivision right on the city boundary, and it also -- so most of this alignment is in the county. There is a small portion, I think a 30-foot right-of-way in the city when the subdivision was created. I believe at the time, they did not -- and Matt or Melanie can correct me if I'm wrong, but they did not name that portion and just assumed the name Indian Canyon Road. So if you look at it, there's 60 feet on the county side, and then 30 feet on the city side. In the county, we did name our portion through our normal process. And then the request -- with this request, if the commission and the board decides to approve it, one of the conditions is that they would have to go to the city of Kingman's City Council and rename that 30-foot portion that's on the city side as well, because currently, they both have the Indian Canyon Road name.
Okay. That's why I was wondering if it had gone through the Kingman City process.
So it has not gone through their process currently. If approved from the county, one of the conditions of approval is that they have to get approval from the city as well.
Okay.
I want to close the public hearing. Commissioner Beal?
What is not being said? Can we get a real quick background? Last 30-some-odd years, I've been a real estate appraiser in the county, and the last two or three years, majority of the mortgage companies, anytime you have a Indian name or initials, a part of the loan process is to change that name because it's showing prejudice. I have a real hard time with this, seeing as where that the federal government is trying to take part of our rights away as per naming streets and stuff. You're not going to change it. It's just the way things are being said, being done by the federal government because of prejudice, supposedly because of prejudice. That's just my statement. Yet that has been happening and is going to continue to happen. Get used to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Any other questions? I will entertain a motion.
Not me.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it. Motion to deny, right?
A motion to deny has been made by, I believe, Alexander -- oh, it's Martin. Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Jacks. All in favor to deny this request by motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. And now, we will move on to item number 12, which is to approve -- we were given the planning commission meetings for next year, and we -- I need to -- if you have any questions to ask now.
The commission calendar, it's just the second meeting of the month, but it needs to be recognized.
Then I will ask for a motion to approve the meeting dates for calendar year 2023.
I move to approve the meeting dates for calendar year 2023.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patello.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. Item number 13, Tim Walsh.
He's passing it off.
I just want to say supervisor, Chairman Gillette and commissioners, I'm Gilbert Smaby. I'm chief building official. Item 13 before you today is the amendments to the Mojave County Building Ordinance Number 2021-03, Section 11 Amendments and deletions to technical codes. Before us will be a reduction in the demolition time, required unsafe structure violations, and also several amendments to Arizona for safety glazing in bathrooms and swimming pool and spa requirements to be in compliance with Arizona state statutes. In your packet, I believe we gave you a memo of the technicals, and briefly, I'll just discuss in the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. There is an expiration section for permits, and within that permit category would be demolition permits. We have had some issues where, well, the code basically states that the permit is good for 180 days. So with that, we've had some demolition cases to where the permit was not acted upon and within 180 days, and this would be considered a dangerous or unsafe structure. So we brought this to the Building Code Advisory Board and had a discussion, and we cited or we made it want to make an amendment to the code to restrict those demolition permits to 45 days. And also, in the packet, that the Building Code Advisory Board recommended the verbiage in that, and I'll read that. "In the case of a dangerous structure, the owner shall show substantial progress or produce a contract of abatement in 45 days. If no process has been made, the permit will expire, therefore becoming null and void, thus allowing Mojave County to proceed with -- in the abatement process." We propose to have the strikeout of demolition permits to -- related to unsafe structures in violation to be valid for 45 days, and also incorporate that verbiage from the Building Code Advisory Board. So these would amend International Building Code Section 105.5, expiration of permits, and also International Residential Code 105.5, expiration of permits. I guess I should have said at the beginning, the motion that you'll be making will be all included of our amendments. So one motion for that. The second item that we wish to amend was the International Swimming and Pool Spa Code. There are three sections in that that state statute is in conflict with our code ordinance. I'll basically say Section 305.32 is regarding gates and latches. Basically, our ordinance or the International Pool and Spa Code called out for an 18-inch release mechanism or opening from that, and state statute calls out for 24 inches. So it's a difference of a few inches, but state statute obviously overrides our local code. The other section is 305.33, which is latches. This one, actually, our code called out for the latch on top of the fence had to be three inches down from the fence. State statute calls out for five inches. We have to make that amendment. And lastly, in the Pool and Spa Code was Section 305.5. On-ground residential swimming pools, the state statute has a clause in there that says, "And secured in an --" actually, it's ladders and steps, and it says, "And secured in an accessible position with a latch device not less than 54 inches above the ground when the pool is not in use." So that verbiage was not in our Pool and Spa Code and that state statute. So we have to amend our code to incorporate that. Third one on the list here was basically safety glazing in all bathrooms. The current code had an exception that, actually, the residential code had an exception that if the glazing was within the water's edge of the bathroom or spa, it would be exempt. State statute basically says any window within the bathroom 56 inches in height from the floor level would have to be safety glazed. And so that's state statute also. The staff's recommendation is to adopt the amendments as proposed by the Building Code Advisory Board and present those to the board supervisors.
Thank you. And I apologize for thinking you were a member of the public.
Chairman Gillette, I want to just tell the board, I apologize for my hat. I had a surgical procedure, and don't wish that --
That probably was what made me say that. I will open the public hearing. But first, I have a question. So if I have a piece of property that has been deemed a hazard, that it needs to be demolished, and I don't do that within the 45 days, the county comes in and does it for me?
Chairman Gillette and commissioners, we currently have a dangerous building program that also planning and zoning has an abatement process for trash and debris. We address basically dangerous structures under the International Property Maintenance Code. Within that, we're required to notify, a 30-day notification, post the property, and give all kinds of, you know, we actually pull a title report. We notify everybody of interest on the property. This section here is actually, if you were voluntarily going to abate the property yourself, you would pull a demolition permit. And so that would stop our process of our county abatement rule and allow you to go ahead and demolish the property yourself. But the problem we've been seeing is they pull the permit, we have to stop our case, and then they don't proceed within six months, and we still have a dangerous situation out there.
Right. But under normal conditions, you would demolish the property. Do you then charge the property owner?
Chairman Gillette and commissioners, yes. We have a whole process where everybody be notified, and then after all the notifications, we would, by contract, go in and abate the property and assess or put a lien on the property for a lien.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this amendment? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do the commissioners have any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Beal?
Question for staff. A question for the lawyer. What's going to be the kickback that if you can't find the people to do the demolition in 45 days? The reason I bring this up, I traveled throughout the county. Somewhere down the line, this is going to occur. What's going to be the kickback? Or do you have any idea?
Chairman Gillette and Commissioner Beal, the recommendation that's been put before you by the Building Code Advisory Board, this language allows, gives the offending property owner 45 days to meet substantial compliance. Okay, that's either abating the property or getting a contract in place with a demolition company to have it abated. Okay? And so, and that was one of the concerns that members of the Building Code Advisory Board had as well, is that sometimes it's going to take some time for a contractor to come in and be able to do that. You won't be able to do it within 45 days. That's why they recommended this language to, as long as you go in and you get a contract to have it done, that way, you, as the offending property owner, can bring it to the county and say, "Look, I've got a contract to have it done. Company can't get in yet to do it, but I'm doing what I can to comply at this point." And so that's why the language is written the way that it is in the recommendation.
Just trying to close a loophole, right? Technically?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
What was the date?
Commissioner Kelly?
Before 45.
Mr. Gillette and Commissioner Kelly? Actually, the building code allows any permit to be active for 180 days. And so, yeah, six months, they have to take action. I'll say a normal building permit, you would have to get your footing inspection within 180 days, and then those inspections continue. And that's what we saw, was they would pull the demolition permit, but they had six months until the permit expired. And we felt that just, we can't leave a dangerous situation that way for that long.
Any other questions? Call for a motion.
Chairman Gillette, if I may, just to reiterate, if the motion, if the commission is in favor of the changes, just that the motion include that they approved the recommendations by the Building Code Advisory Board, as those recommendations that they had had the additional language for the 45 days, showing that substantial progress for the 45.
Thank you. I need a motion.
I move to approve as recommended by the Building Code Advisory Board.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patello, seconded by Commissioner Barlow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number 14, are the monthly reports. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Commissioner Jacks?
No.
No. Hearing none. Item number 15, which is commissioners' comments. Do we have any?
Laura has one.
I do have one. We have the December 14th is our time to recognize the commission for all the fabulous work you do. So after the meeting next month, we will be going to a workshop where our fabulous county attorney, Jeff Hawes, will be doing a presentation for you, as well as a luncheon. I will give you more specifics here in the next couple of days as we finalize the food. So please plan on attending afterwards.
I will be in attendance to that meeting.
Excuse me?
I will be in attendance to that.
And I appreciate that. Thank you for letting me know ahead of time.
Yeah, and it's free. Years of service.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, I'll move along to the calls to the public. Anyone who wishes to speak has two minutes.
Take some more away.
Seeing none, I am going to adjourn this meeting, having no more business to come before it. This meeting is adjourned.
Second.
I didn't move in a motion.